Dr. Wolf.
Yes, can I get a little shift to come out of existence?
Salute.
We are back in session. I have your attention, we're back in session, thank you.
All those in favor, stick it about the same time.
Aye.
Second motion to approve PS one, PS two, PS six as presented. Motion by Dr. Miller. Second, second by the Stanley. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye.
No.
You have a vote of seven to one. That concludes the business of the Personal Services Committee.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Point of information, was that the sending vote for all of the PS items that we just approved, or one in particular?
I was responding to the motion that was made. The others who did not vote, I don't think I have an obligation to say which one I voted.
It was just a point of information, Madam Chair, I just want people to hear what I vote on. Thank you.
Was that the end of your report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It is now six twenty-five. Someone give me a motion for the meeting to adjourn?
Yes.
The motion is second, that the meeting adjourns. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting adjourned, we will return back at six thirty.
Dr. Sims.
Yes, sir.
Is Ms. Johnson nearby?
No, sir. No, sir. She's right there.
Yeah.
She's not nearby.
Alright, sounds good, I'm about to give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Big cup of order, please. Well, thank you for being present today. Time now is six thirty-one. And the call has been made to order. This is two ten, gentlemen, we have ten. And I want to thank you all for being here. For those who don't know me, my name is Mertz Champion Johnson, and that man was President Jackson. This is his virtual. So again, I want to thank you for being here. At this time, we recall for Isaiah Smith of Northeast High School. Isaiah plays first in the forty-meter run at the State Special Olympics.
Do you need to give everyone? Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the invocation by the Reverend Raymond Robinson of Stuart Chapel AMV Church. Reverend Robinson.
Amen. Can we all just give God a hand praise right now?
We really were in the middle of work this up today to have another day of life. Precious masterful creator of all things, God, we just ushered you into this place right now. God, touch the superintendent, Dan Sims. Touch Dr. Lisa Garrett-Bohr. Touch Darrell Moon. Touch James Freeman. Touch Dr. Sandra Woodford. Touch Dr. Thelma Diller. Touch Kristen Haddad. Touch Mertice Johnson. Touch Dewan Jackson. Almighty God, touch our educators. Touch our children. Touch the mothers and fathers. Touch big county educational system right now, God. Fill them up, anoint them, give them power, give them glory, God. Help them to move in a way that will give glory to the kingdom of God. Lord, we ask that whatever it is, whatever strength and necessity and wisdom and knowledge that we need, God, I ask right now that you will usher him to our leaders, to our mothers and fathers, to our children, to our educators, God. Put a hedge of protection around them, let the angels have the way that no harm and danger will come. In the name of the Almighty God, we thank you, God, for everything that you have done and everything that you're gonna do on this day. And we just give you a praise like never before. In the mighty name of Jesus, everybody say amen, amen, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Robinson. Found the prayer and that special touch, I received it in the name of Jesus. Now, we will have our report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and good afternoon to everyone. And I'm excited for the month of June, wow, where did the time go? Share a few highlights from our past month, and I'm excited to give to you now. First of all, congrats, class of two thousand twenty-three. I am a proud Bibb County School District graduation alone. I was honored to serve as superintendent for my first spring graduation ceremonies in Bibb County this past month. Congratulations to the more than one thousand one hundred and fifty graduates participating in seven ceremonies at the Macon Coliseum. Y'all should be clapping right now. The class of two thousand twenty-three will definitely make us proud because they were built by Bibb for Bibb. And now that our spring graduation season has concluded, I wanted to share my number one graduate of this school year. My beautiful daughter, Kumi. Yes. She attended Alabama Indian University, all expenses earned and paid. She is a four-point-oh scholar, none of my dollars. Student athlete, makeup artist, and accomplished dancer. Dad is proud. Youth build. Youth build, it was such an honor to witness the collaborative effort between Bibb County School District, Macon Area Habitat for Humanity, and so many other partners working with our youth build students. Participating in Habitat's key presentation ceremony for a new homeowner last month was truly life-changing. To see adults in tears as they received gifts, their home and love, just wow. I'm so proud of our youth build students for the work they put into making this home safe and great space for this family. Leadership Symposium. More than two hundred of our Bibb County School District leaders came together last week to begin preparing for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year with our annual Leadership Symposium conference. We kicked off the symposium, the principals and assistant principals in Atlanta with the support of the National SAM Project, and discussed topics such as school continuous improvement plans and the upcoming accreditation process with COCKU. The week continued as directors, coordinators, and instructional coaches joined at the symposium workshops at the PLC on Wednesday and Thursday. This was a great experience filled with bonding time, new learning, and honing our skills for next year. Leader recognition, and she just happens to be here this evening. Congrats to our very own Tanya Allen. Principal of Burnell Hunt Magnet School for receiving the Joseph Richardson Learning Leader Award from Georgia State University's Principal Center. Such a huge honor for an extraordinary leader. Family Fun Day. Thank you to all of the families, staff members, and community partners who joined us for the district's Family Fun Day and fun run in honor by one hundred and fiftieth anniversary year and the launch of our new strategic plan, hashtag Built for Bibb, more victory plan. I want to especially thank team members while maintenance and grounds and operations departments for pitching in and volunteering to grill hot dogs and hamburgers and even fry up fish and fruit turnovers. Yes, you missed it if you didn't get it. This was such a great event with a fantastic turnout. Cox Inspirational Heroes. Last month, Cox Communications hosted the annual Cox Inspirational Student Hero Awards in Bibb County, recognizing thirty-two students who have overcome extreme hardships in their lives. I want to thank Cox for recognizing our outstanding student heroes. It's so important for students to know they are seen and to hear that someone cares about them. This celebration gave our students a chance to hear from their teachers and school leaders about how they see student heroes showing up in ways that matter and inspire other students each day. inaugural Bibb Speeds. Our athletics department hosted the inaugural Bibb Speeds Awards in May to celebrate and recognize athletes and coaches for their dedication and performance. This was truly an auspicious occasion. Congratulations to all of the athletes that put time and effort into performing on courts, fields, courses, classes, and everywhere else. They deserved every bit of recognition. And lastly, on the horizon, the Bibb County School District PBIS Department is planning our Back to School Bash, drive-through event that will be held on Friday, July twenty-eighth, nine to eleven-thirty a.m. at Ed. DeFors Sports Complex. The purpose of the Back to School Bash is to decrease the number of student absences during the first days of school. Please join us as we provide Bibb County families with free school uniforms, uniform shirts, school supplies, backpacks, free medical screenings, and much more in an effort to remove barriers from our families. Before I conclude, Vice President, I would like to just take a moment to acknowledge that this is board meeting number twelve for me. It is a blessing. It is a blessing to be here, knowing that I have successfully concluded one year of service with Bibb County School District. And I'm looking at you, I'm looking at everyone here because had it not been for you, I would not have been successful. Just know that because this Board of Education took a chance on me for me to be the superintendent, I will return that and continue to return that with a level of commitment, a level of energy and focus, dedication to this district, my district, our district. I am extremely grateful to be sitting here at my twelve, with hopefully many more to come, but at least twenty-four more for my contract. But we'll receive what the good Lord has planned after that. But my commitment is real, and I'm grateful to be your superintendant. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
At this time, we will have an invitation. Bill Johnson will be having. Threat of mission, uh, superintendent?
Yes, and I'll turn the floor over now to Janet Cassidy, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Affairs, to lead the way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The Leader in Me Initiative has been a huge asset for changing the culture in our schools. This program, which incorporates Stephen Covey's Seven Habits throughout our schools as well as in our students' whole lives, provides proactive steps for decision-making. As our schools have implemented Leader in Me practices in their daily routines, several have taken the next step necessary to become lighthouse schools. Lighthouse certification involves analysis of evidence provided by the school as well as a site visit from the Leader in Me team. The following schools have recently received lighthouse status. Leaders, please come forward when your school is called. Let me see if I do this right. Dean. Dean. Doctor Mark Lewis.
Please wave to our two board members online and then shake hands as you go.
The principal is Tawania Wilson. Next, we have Heritage Elementary School and Principal Donna Klein. Go Heritage. Next, we have Porto Elementary School and Principal Chris Kirby. Rosa Telay Elementary School and Principal LaShonda Gilher. Union Elementary School and Principal LaShawn Roder.
Go Union.
Go Union.
Additionally, the following three schools completed the process to be recertified as lighthouse schools for another two years. Burnell Hunt Magnet Elementary School and Principal Tanya Allen.
Dr. Sims, I'm impressed with these principals that got half of their staff to turn out.
I think you and I could follow them after we see where that goes.
Not saying we will involve, involve. Sunny Carter Elementary School and Principal Latricia Reeves. Unfortunately, she is unable to be with us tonight. Next, we have Springdale Elementary School and Principal Dr. Kami Hamler.
Congratulations, ladies.
And her escort. Congratulations and thank you all for being Built for Bibb. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy, congratulations once again. Thank you, Vice President Johnson, for our recognitions.
Thank you, and I don't walk as fast as Dr. Sims. It is time now for us to give the invitation to the sisters to address the board, if we have any. We have two. Thank you. I want to remind you that we have three members to address the boards. The clock is already up there, so it starts as soon as you begin to speak. First, we went down. I can't pronounce his name. Bernard Walsh. I don't have. Hang on right now. I'm trying to read it.
It brings me back, teacher, not being able to read my handwriting. Getting flashbacks already. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. My name is Benny Walsh or Bernard Walsh. I was here to address you guys about SS4, the district-wide HVAC replacement project. You can stop me at any point if it's not appropriate for me to be here when addressing you in this setting. Tonight's agenda, I noticed, lists two bidders as having responded. One of the bidders was evaluated and has scores on all those categories. The other bidder, Max Air Mechanical, doesn't have any scores listed. But it looks like the bid was not considered at some fairly early stage. I became aware of that last night, I think last night maybe was when the agenda got posted online. I reviewed it, and I can't see anything major or obvious that isn't there. So I am just concerned that it might be some technicality. There were also some technical issues during the bid submission process. There was like a last-minute extension because of the technical issues. So I'm not sure if something got missed in that point in time. But I was here to ask if the board was provided with a reason for the disqualification of that other bid, or if you provided any information about the other bid so that you could weigh it up and make sure you had all the information to make your decision. I don't necessarily expect an answer to that question, that's just a question I wanted to ask. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Carl Fletcher.
If there was a dress code, I wouldn't may wear a shirt on my collar. Your superintendent, I'm sure you're committed to your job, want to see the good cag, so. I hope I don't put a damper on proceedings tonight, but there's some things that I need to get out because I'm a taxpayer. And I'm seventy, next one. No kids in public school when I'm still paying school taxes. When I asked Lee Robinson 20 years ago, and I'm sure some of you remember Lee Robinson, he's the mayor. I said, why am I still paying school taxes? He said, because you're investing in the kids of Bibb County. Well, let me tell you what my investment is. Result of it over the last 20 years. Overall, in Bibb County, the middle school proficiency rate reading is 25%, and math is 16%. That's another school. In elementary school, proficiency is 28% reading, 28% math. In high school, it's 30% reading and 12% math. All three of these are well below state standards. According to the website, I don't visit, and I don't just go to one, I get to the census of several. Bibb County spends an average of $15,430 per student. The state average is only $12,400, which is better than 3,000 more. And proficiency scores are well below state average. I understand that. The three major high schools, probably in Bibb County, Mount Sells, Stratford, and First Presbyterian, exceed state proficiency. And they're not all okay. Stratford is 21% color. Tappan is 11% of color. FPD is 17% of color. Mount Sells is 40% of color. But yet, all of them exceed state standards, proficiency in math and reading. And I'm sure that superintendent is trying his best to achieve levels that are satisfied people like me, I'm my son. My son graduated Bibb County Public Schools, and he is a hard-working Bibb County Deputy, won Deputy of the Year last year in Bibb County. So I'm proud of him. But I told him in his graduate class, you are what you want to be. If you want to be mediocre, you're going to be mediocre. If you want to excel and let people notice you, that's up to you. I'm sure there's many, many students in Bibb County that are great students, proficient in everything. But these statistics show that there's a lot of improvement being made. I just wish I knew why 70-year-old with no kids in public school that there's not something that the Board of Education can do for people that are senior citizens. Maybe give them a little break in the school tanks. I know with 16 days, and y'all went down one or two ends this time. But still, for people on 16 counts, it's a verb. It's a baseball. So if y'all would reconsider, I would appreciate it. My phone number is on that, thank you, ma'am. If you'd like to call me and ease my mind, feel free to do so. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. So if you're going to say I need like that concession.
No matter, Vice President.
Thank you. Next, we will have a vote on the consent agenda and the board members of the board meetings. And I will read all the ones that we will address. And I would need your approval. IS1, IS3, IS4, IS5, IS6, IS7, IS8, IS9, IS10, IS12. And then we will vote on SS3. Sorry, FSS3, FSS4, FSS5, FSS6, FSS7, FSS8, and FSS9. Just stop right there.
Just begin the mic number five thousand, please.
Did you hear anything that I said? Should I say it again? Do you need me to repeat?
I just wanted to know that we couldn't hear you. Just wanted you to know that we couldn't hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dillon. I apologize, that wasn't on my sheet. Okay, so we have PR1, PR2, PR3, PR4. I'm sorry, PR1, PR2, and PR3. Those are the ones that we will vote on tonight. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Dillon. Jackson.
Madam Chair, make sure I heard you include the minutes from our two previous meetings inside of that motion as well?
Yes, I mentioned the minutes.
Very well.
All right, is that second?
Second.
It's been motioned in second that we approve the item. Those that I named, that discussion. Maybe they are. Opposers. No opposers, so that carries. Next, we will vote on these items separately. Personnel services. PS1. Is there a motion to approve PS1? So moved.
Second.
There are questions on PS1. Right? All those in favor, passing PS1, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Of those. I can't hear. All right, all those who approve of passing PS1, please say aye. Aye. All the posers. All right, so we have one opposed with PS1. So it carries with 6 to 1. All right, next we have PS2. May I have a motion to pass PS2?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jackson, second by Dr. Dillon. Is there a discussion? All those in favor of the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposers? All right, so we have one opposed and six aye, so that pass 6 to 1. And we have, okay, is it PS6? PS6? May I have a motion to pass PS6?
So moved.
That's second. Is there a discussion? All those in favor, PS6, please say aye. Aye. Opposers? All right, so that will be 6 to 1. And the ayes have it. 6 to 2. 6 to 5 to 2. I'm sorry, I need Dr. Dillon. 5 to 2. Okay? Thank you. So we have PS1 passes 6 to 1. PS2 passes 6 to 1. PS6 passes 5 to 2.
Vice President.
Yes, sir.
If I may, in light of that vote, take just a moment to introduce those new leaders.
Yes.
Who. My pleasure to announce that our new executive director of School Nutrition is Cona Schuman.
New stand, so good to see you.
Yes, she happens to be here.
Good.
Our new director of support and after-school programs is Dr. Tracy Buff. He is not with. And finally, our new director of partnerships, projects, and engagement is LaShawn Proudie. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, at this time, we will call on new business. Is there a new business? If not, we will go to old business. Is there an old business? Right? So we have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Dr. Dillon, settled by Dr. Wolf. Is there a discussion on adjournment? All those in favor, please say aye. All those.